Good evening. It's 7:00 PM on Thursday, February 27th, 2025, here in Historic Town Hall and Sandwich. As we convene our open meeting, please be reminded that we are being televised and recorded on SCTV. May we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, public forum. Is anybody here for public forum? It was used last night.
Oh, it was, okay.
It was.
Good evening. Candy Thompson, 30 Kensington Drive. About this time 50 years ago, citizens began working on a town bicentennial celebration for 1976. One subcommittee was called the Bicentennial Boulder Committee. Very pithy name, and to the point. A suitable rock and plaque were donated by Al Van Crocker. Sandwich employees prepped the site and maneuvered the sizable boulder in place on the lawn of the Deacon Eldred House. On July 4th, 1976, hundreds of citizens gathered at the wing school for the opening of a 100-year-old time capsule. The selectmen and town clerk held up each item, as historian and author Russell Lovell described it. Then citizens marched down Water Street to the sounds of fifes and drums to the Eldred House, where the Declaration of Independence was read and Bicentennial Boulder was unveiled to the peal of church bells. Next year will mark our nation's 250th anniversary. I'm sure Sandwich will be marking the occasion as the oldest town on Cape Cod ought to. However, Bicentennial Boulder will be off limits. The stone stands behind private property and no trespassing signs. When the town sold off the house two years ago, it sold off public access to the marker. I'd urge this committee, this Board of Selectmen, to arrange with the homeowners to have Bicentennial Boulder moved to a spot that's accessible, perhaps in the village, perhaps at Mill Creek Park, which was the site of Sandwich's 375th anniversary celebration. A symbol of our local history shouldn't be an inaccessible afterthought in someone's private side yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Review and approval of minutes for February 13th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for February 13th, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 3-0.
Town manager report. Terms of upcoming meetings next Tuesday night is the Finance Committee at 6 o'clock. And I think we're going to talk about it a little bit later, but Dave Mason and I are coming in to talk about the ongoing wastewater efforts, which is inclusive of the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund request at town meeting, actually at the town election. But mostly it's just to give an update on all the ongoing work. So I'll talk about that when we get to the budget. Our meeting is next Thursday night at 7:00. And off the top of my head, I think we have a liquor license hearing, but I don't remember which one it was. But I'll work with Charlie on that. And then a couple other quick ones. On Monday evening, the Historic District Committee quickly approved. Thank you, not because it was quick, but thank you for the strong support. The renovations to this building, the Historic Town Hall. And it's mostly focused on siding trim and windows and paint. As the board knows, there's been a lot of water intrusion for quite some time, and the windows were never really addressed, with the exception of a small project that was done in the late 80s. And so it'd be great to get those fixed. And so we're on the right path. And I know Heather would want to thank Maria Raiber from BLFR for their work on doing all that. Now Catalyst for their work in the excellent presentation that she did. So full speed ahead on that. And I know we'll have an article on the warrant coming from CPA Funding to help complete the money for that project. And then one other one I just wanted to bring to your attention. You may remember this from a couple of years ago, and then it sort of went away, and apparently it's back. So when the state was looking at the shared use path that we did in the intersection with Route 130, near the old exit 2, current exit 59, I believe, they talked about doing a small park and ride lot. I believe it was on the southeast corner of that intersection as you go up the hill. And so they want to resurrect that, and so they're going to start doing a study on that. And their thought was a small park and ride lot there could also double with a parking lot for the shared use path as well. So they just sent us a letter this week to let us know that that was going to be looked at once again. And I know Paul Hilton's very, you know, we'll be working closely with them, but we also want to make them aware of our plans to try to connect the canal pathway to the shared use path on Service Road. And so maybe there's some things we could work with them that they might be able to address for us. But just so we're aware, that's going to be looked at. I don't know if, the way I read the letter, it's going to be studied and then a plan designed. Whether or not it gets funded, who knows? But they're going to look at it again. And I think that was it.
Anybody have anything for Bud? Okay. Moving on to correspondence, statements, announcements. Anybody have anything? Well, I have a couple, if you don't mind. Bikeways and pedestrians met on Monday night. Update on the Service Road Shared Use Pass. Update on the Service Road Canal Connection. And how, as Mr. Dunham just reported, the Bastard Proposed Park and Ride could help to facilitate that. Crosswalks, bike racks, and their 2024 annual report progress. Finance Committee received fine budget presentations from police, fire, and DPW. They also received conceptual information from the proposed DPW Fire Substation Project from the project design team. Good discussion, progress. Their next meeting is on March 4th. The Public Schools 2025 Strategic Planning Committee met on the 26th. Meanwhile, focus groups have formed outreach through public meeting and remotely, as well as in person, progress. The intent is to develop a plan for the next five years before the end of the current term. And yesterday, school committee met. Highlights included the fiscal year '25 budget update, finalization of changes to the Sandwich Middle High School Program of Studies, mid-cycle district improvement plan review, review of fiscal year 2026 capital items, public information, public reaffirmation, excuse me, of school choice. All very informative meeting. And that's all I have at the moment. Moving on to all business, fiscal year 2026, budget updates and information.
So the two summary pages in your packet, one for the base budget, one for the so-called optimal outcome budget. Nothing has changed on those two sheets. So we haven't gotten any new information that would cause us to change any of those figures. I don't know if we want to have a discussion more about, like, is there any additional information you need on the operating budgets? Or I think it's pretty straightforward. Really, the only difference expense-wise between the two is to try to get the extra $560,000 for DPW for road improvements. And the good news was, once we got our final health insurance numbers, it allowed us to still keep that excess levy reserve if we decided to keep it, you know, should be over $3 million, where I think we thought we would have to dip below that if we tried to fund at that level. So that's all been good news. I don't know if you want to, should I clarify anything on that? Or?
Question I have, Bud, is with all the, you know, as you read the news about the federal, and then on top of that, some of the financial issues that the state's having currently. If there was a major shift, is what seems like is coming with some of these expenditures that they're doing in regards to possibly changing income tax rules, excise tax uncertainty. Do you foresee, or how much warning would we get from the state if some of that were to spill over into budgets?
Yeah. I would think our operating budgets really don't receive any federal money, so to speak, on the town side. The school does get, I think in that list we saw a couple of weeks ago, like six or eight different accounts. Most of those are formula funding, I believe. And, you know, there's reporting that has to take place, but it comes pretty readily, or it always has. So if that changes, that might be probably the place we'd see it the most. On the municipal side, what I'd be worried about, you know, we started that Jones Road Culver Improvement Project, and that was from the Federal National Resources Conservation Service, NRCS. And in rough numbers, we were responsible for about $250,000 for design and permitting. The actual implementation was almost going to be 100% from the federal government, about $750,000. So we're still in the design and permitting phase. So we also had to go back to town meeting, if we remember, to get a little bit more because some of the complexities of that area. And so we're still in the process of spending our money. We just hope, hopefully, things will be resolved well enough. And we have contracts for those that date back a couple of years. So I would hope that would still come. It's too soon to tell, like, what caused it. And I know we're going to talk about it. I think it's the last thing on the agenda. So when the state's Clean Water Revolving Fund list came out, for the first time, they had restrictions on the amount that they would sort of back up in any one year, and then wouldn't allow you carry over bigger balances, which really would hurt a lot of the things that we've been doing on the Cape. All the prior work for these huge projects, you know, were well in excess of the $50 million cap, and you could carry them over. You know, Barnstable alone would often have 200-plus million multiple years in a row. And there's no way you can spend that much money in a year. So, you know, it carries over. A great example would be what Yarmouth and Dennis just voted in the last six months. Like, I'm sure a big part of why the public supported those so strongly was because there was the hope of the SRF low-interest loans. But the bigger plus is that the 25% on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund money. So this afternoon, the deputy commissioner of DEP was, or one of the deputy commissioners from, I'm sorry, Energy and Environmental Affairs, because they've talked about doing an environmental bond bill over the next year. And the last one we had, I think, was in 2008. So it's been a while. And so a lot of the discussion focused on concerns about the SRF project and why the Cape is sort of a, I was going to say unfairly, but that's a, the Cape has been singled out regulatory, regulation-wise, by the nitrogen-sensitive area regs. And so with that, like, there should be money to back it up so we can try to get some of these huge things done. And so one of the proposals was to make major appropriations within that environmental bond bill. And I know you guys all know, the environmental bond bill just is a list of things they are authorized to do. Doesn't mean they do them. It then has to be appropriated by the legislature and the governor. So, but you have to get on the list to have a shot. So that was a big part of the comments that were made. And then Dave DiCanto and I went, and we had three Sandwich-specific small things, two Culver projects and that, you know, Old Harbor issue with the dredging slash, you know, trying to improve the marsh and make us more resilient. Those two things, those three things are small compared to the other needs that'll be on that list. So it was sort of hinted that the reason that they tried to put these restrictions on that new list for the first time was because they're oversubscribed in the sense of so many towns are asking for big bucks. But also, that, a lot of that money, I think, comes from the federal government. So it's the uncertainty. And we were very clear, like, hey, you know, we're used to getting stuff thrown on us, you know, and try to solve a problem. So let's all try to work cooperatively to try to figure out how to do that. So, I mean, it's not an overnight thing, but I think that would be a good example of a concern. The other things that we've heard about, that I've heard about the past week on Monday, was the staff meeting with Public Safety and DPW. So most of our MEMA grants may come from federal money, but those are fine, relatively small. We do have a couple of FEMA grants for the fire department, about $250,000 each, that we've been told those are on hold. One was for the stretchers, you know, that rise. And then we also just recently applied for a higher-level replacement of our, you know, EKG and other heart monitoring machines that you can actually administer medications and stuff. So those are in, they had been accepted, but they're sort of just told us, hey, just go slow, which is fine, like, we can get by. That doesn't really impact the operating budget. So I can't really speak for the schools.
Heather, you have something?
Yeah, I haven't talked with Bud. About this one, they're small, and they don't impact the operating budget, but their services, I know you're aware of them. We have a health roundtable call that we have every quarter, and the county's on it, and the VNA. And the VNA has been curtailed on some of their evidence-based programming. So that would be like National Institute of Health or CDC funding based on studies. So that's curtailed. They're good for this year, but they may not have programming in the next year. And there has been some impact to Meals on Wheels. And in Sandwich, there's a waitlist for Meals on Wheels, mostly related to the number of volunteers they have to drive for meals. So I wanted to mention that in a public setting, that if you're interested in driving for Meals on Wheels, you can contact the Department of Senior Committee Services, and they'll put you in touch with the right people. But those are two programs we know that will have impacts in the 12 to 18-month horizon.
Great, thank you for that information and for that public announcement as well. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Onto annual town meeting list of potential warrant articles for May 5th, 2025.
I'm sorry, two more budget things before I forget. So next Tuesday night, Dave Mason and I are going to do a more extensive wastewater presentation. So we completed, like, a packet, so I put it all, it's in front of your chairs. You might want to take a look. There's like a three-plus-page outline at all of our meetings. I don't think there's anything new on that outline that you guys haven't heard in one, you know, one way or another. But I think the Finance Committee, you know, a lot of that hasn't been gone through in as much detail. There's some pretty decent attachments, just so you can see, you know, to try to give a better overview of the issues we're trying to solve. But one of the main things we want to do is later this year, either summer, early fall, whenever we all think it makes the most sense. Like, we should really have Wright Pierce down with Dave and Heather and I to do a much more extensive update. And maybe we could have some bigger things to provide updates on, including the work that we have ongoing with the school. So things are moving really well at the senior middle school, middle, senior high school. We have that, contracts all been signed. It's just waiting when the right time for them to do the work. We're working on the specs, on physically what needs to be done with the systems at Oak Ridge and Forestale. That's, you know, we're doing that work, not the school. So the hope is that we will have those bids ready fairly quickly, go out to bid, get the quotes back, so that work can be done this summer. In the scheme of things, it's really straightforward. It's work that almost any really qualified local, larger contractor could do, not some fancy, you know, wastewater engineering company. So we're hopeful to get good bids on that. And then probably bid it separately, removing all the old equipment from the two wastewater plant buildings to clean those out and get that available for future use. So those are all going forward, which is great. The bigger things that we seem to talk about a lot, direction from, you know, DEP or EPA, haven't gotten any. You know, we'll keep asking. We do have a meeting coming up, hopefully by the end of March, with the State Treasurers Office, with the people who oversee the SRF program, just to see if that special act that we had submitted that didn't get through has been refiled. If they have concerns, we potentially could go to town meeting and make some minor wording changes and get that resubmitted. So John Georgio will be a part of that meeting. Hopefully, we can get some better answers. And if not, if it looks like there are no concerns, then if we could ever push that through, and this all ties into one thing I think we've mentioned a couple of times, is that we have Wright Pierce doing a higher-level review of sort of JBCC cooperative solution versus a Sandwich-only solution, and trying to look at some really high-level numbers just to see what the price differences are, and trying to estimate the time it takes to do certain things. And so we're working on that. I would think if that special act went through, we'd have a lot more ability to maybe have, like, the base be a realistic option. But we're just worried that the permitting there could be harder than if we did it on our own. So it seems like we've been talking about this stuff forever, because we have, but it's so complex. There aren't any easy answers. And we were talking before the meeting, there's, you know, two or three towns trying to permit some really, like, state-of-the-art type stuff, like Falmouth's trying to permit an ocean outfall instead of disposing treated effluent on land that would just go right out into the ocean, you know, at a site well offshore. Barnstable is contemplating treating to such a high level that potentially they're exploring, like, could it be just, instead of disposed of, could it be just injected back into the drinking water supply? So, I mean, there's a lot of things going on. Every time you hear the phrase PFOS, or higher levels of treatment, just means literally tens of millions of dollars more. It can all be treated, but you have to build the plant to treat for those contaminants. So I don't know, it's just, you know, one step up and two steps back a lot. So I guess all this goes back to, we're going to get a better overview once we know a little bit more later this summer with our wastewater experts. And I think we should just invite the Finance Committee to come that night, because it's, you know, it's big-picture stuff. And then I didn't know, like, on the budget stuff, like, if you had a goal of when you wanted to take votes so we could relate to the Finance Committee what you support. Do you want us to prepare anything additionally to show what the differences are?
I mean, I've gone through it. I mean, it's, you know, as always, it's a well-thought-out budget with, you know, good backup for why we're doing it. You know, especially the DPW increase, I think, is important with the road maintenance, you know, driving around town, seeing some of the condition of some of the roads. You know, that, you know, I think it's one of those things, you know, you pay $10 now where you pay $100 in five years. I think that that's, you know, I think it's important. I think that those, and those are also the things that incrementally in the budget are overall are small. But that's the thing that's going to impact everybody, you know, firsthand probably the most, and, you know, see real results from the other tax dollars at work.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I'm just, with regard to Joint Base Cape Cod, what I'm concerned about is that we've never had either a downturn in the economy or someone aggressively pursuing downsizing the size of government without base closures coming into play. And if there is a base that I would perceive to be on thin ice, it would be ours. So that's, to me, as much concern as we would have, or I personally have as an elected official about the $50 million cap, is that does away with the long-term commitment that the state has had through the SRF that is as old as, you know, it's, I mean, I don't know how old it, it's got to be 40 years since there's been SRF money. The whole time in my professional career in public works.
MWRA, right? That never would have started, yeah.
My contemporaries in public works were all reaping big benefits and pounding sewer in the ground all over New England. So I'm concerned about that kind of a commitment for the whole sewer program. I mean, it, our whole thing is based on having that kind of outside help. And then at the same time, we're hanging ourselves on, you know, we've got a life, you know, we've got a life jacket in the sense that we can put it on our own land. But I'm not confident that JBCC is a really good, secure, long-term decision for us.
I will say, some of the things I've seen, you know, I've talked to Ed Leonard, but also stuff between he and Dave. You know, just a couple of examples, like, right now, and I forget the exact amount. I think the base is permitted to do, like, 400, 450,000 gallons a day. They're not even doing 70,000. So one of the thoughts is Converge and ASUS could apply to the state and say, we want to go to four, you know, what we're allowed to with our current system, and we want to take it from Sandwich, and just see what they hear back. Sort of run a test balloon. Maybe that's the way we could get an answer, because, like, that would cover a decent amount of our Phase 1 without having to build anything extreme. And yet, it wouldn't preclude us from doing stuff on our own in Phases 2 and 3, you know, further down the road, depending on how things are working. And similarly, even if we have to go on it, go ahead on our own, it doesn't preclude us from working with the base to be part of something, because they may need, they may need to come our way, or maybe in Phase 2, they'll join us. You know, who knows? And it's, it's so much speculation, but at some point, we're going to be forced to do something.
Most of the time, when you get pushed from behind.
Yeah.
You fall down.
Yeah, yeah. And I will say, I think.
It's kind of where we are, because we're being pushed, do this by the federal government. Now, the onus is going to be on us to pay for it ourselves. And what I'm concerned about is I'm concerned about a small-time contractor within the defense appropriation schedule. A small town, a small contractor on a base on Cape Cod, a blue cod. And they're going to be looking for money to sustain this plant, enlarge this plant. And where is the sympathy going to come from to do that? I just, I'm really concerned about this.
The other good thing, because we don't have the terrible watersheds and embankments, we haven't had to move as fast. So the longer we wait, we are learning a lot more. And, you know, there's advances being made that we'll be able to take advantage of that people who did stuff 10 years ago can't. I mean, some of that's good.
Oh, and the sewer contractors that are working down in Yarmouth, Dennis Howard, Chatham, have gotten really good at it.
Yep.
And the towns have shown that it's adaptive. You live with some traffic issues, like they've had the last few days, 28.
Should I include more information, not on wastewater, on the budget in the packet next week for a potential vote? Does that make sense?
I think we have a lot of information, and I think that we can proceed in that direction.
I'll put more of that summary material in.
We're good? Okay, okay. You know, and just a crazy thought, if you don't mind, about Joint Base. I wonder if they close the base down. Not that I want that to happen, but could we buy the plant, which, it may still a joint venture?
I don't know, yeah.
That's how we, you know.
It's antiquated, but.
That's how we ran the transfer station.
Yeah.
With the board of managers overseeing it from the towns that participated. Still kept the plant going.
Yep.
Right? Just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay. All good? Okay. Town Hall Annex Disposition Update.
I forgot to do the. I forgot to do the-
I'm sorry.
No, no, my, that was my bad, because you, I got you out of order. Um, so the warrant, two changes since our last meeting. There were two listings on the HERO Act, and if you remember, that's a new state act from 2024, that there's certain exemption, higher-level exemptions that would be available for disabled veterans. One dealt with motor vehicle excise, and the second deals with veterans exemption, which is from taxes. And so I just wanted you to know, the Board of Assessors is working on this, so I think Ben Stich will come to one of our meetings later in March to explain what their recommendations are, and doing more research on the excise portion, that does not require going to town meeting. So that would be a recommendation that they could make to you and the Board of Assessors to adopt, not have to go to town meeting. And then on the exemption, just to give you a feel for what the legislation says, is if someone's a disabled vet, depending on the percentage of their disability, they may be entitled to higher-levels exemptions to get a break on their taxes, and then, once it's approved, statutorily, there's a cost-of-living adjustment each year, so that gets adjusted automatically without needing another vote. And I think it's fair to say, the assessors are looking, and the assessing department is looking at supporting both of those programs, it's just at what level. I think on one of these, there is a sliding scale, so they're looking at that and running the numbers. And then, like I said, with the excise tax for vehicles, that would come from a vote that's not required at town meeting. And then the only other one is Taylor White brought to my attention on the list, it's 17, so there's a provision of the general laws that if you adopt them, whenever the deadline is for submitting nominating papers, theoretically, right now, someone could come in a half hour before, this requires someone to pull papers, not return, and the deadlines are all the same, but requires someone to pull papers 48 hours before the deadline, because there's certain things they have to do when someone pulls papers, and it's, apparently, it's something town clerks are asking communities to adopt. So again, if we wanna find out more, I can have him come into a future meeting to explain it. But all the other items were the same ones that we had on our list last week.
I'd be pleased to have the clerk come in.
Okay.
That makes sense to me. Anybody else? We'll learn. And, and, and the HERO Act, you know, we'll see what the information assessing provides, but, you know, personally, I'm in favor of it.
I think Bud mentioned this one last week, that we'll have LeAnn, and I think on the 27th of March, if I have my calendar right, to review the short-term rental bylaw-
Oh, great.
As you recall, is, would be adopted by this board.
Great.
We'll do that.
Okay. Onto Town Hall Annex. Okay.
It's just a brief update. We were able to review the full RFP and attachments with Town Council last week, so that is ready to issue, and the dates are proposed here for an issue date of March 12th and a due date of April 11th, as well as a highly, strongly recommended site visit, but cannot be required on March 29th, excuse me, 19th. Written questions due to us to the 29th, so we can get responses due and timely for proposals due on the 11th. So I think we're, we're ready to put that out. LeAnn will be doing some significant marketing efforts. Those aren't, like, external marketing, they're internal with particular potential purchasers, and hope to have some high-quality proposals for you to review towards the middle of April.
Looking forward to it. Did I hear you correctly that the walkthrough is not a requirement?
The procurement act does not allow you to make that mandatory, right? Most people do, they, and we can accommodate if they wanna come at another time.
Just wanted to make sure I understood.
We wish it could be mandatory, but it's not.
Thank you.
Serious bitters.
Okay. Anybody else? Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman?
Just, I know we've discussed this before, and seeing the electrical rate increases that we're seeing, did we ever get a solid answer back on the schools, whether we could do a microgrid, our own self-funded microgrid?
I haven't had anyone formally respond to that, other than they all require interconnection to the existing infrastructure, so all the same issues that you bump into when you're generating the energy would relate to, my understanding is that the same is required when you do the microgrid. We can, I can ask again for a little bit more formal, but I've asked two folks from the Cape Light Compact about that, and that was their response. I wish it were so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Would you mind-
None of them are actually independent, they all have some reliance on the utility system. Because they store, and then they, you know, they go into the grid when they're not being used by the consuming entity, and then they are available when it is, and so, and there's backup. But it is, it is not completely independent of the system.
Okay, so there's no other access that we can approach on that, huh?
I would say that access would be so costly as to be not available, but there's nothing else that I'm aware of. But one of the things we're looking at, working with the Cape and Vinyard, Cape Light Compact on, is a full analysis of what our options are for energy reduction-
Yeah.
Energy rejection. That isn't an energy, energy production plan, but it is an energy reduction plan.
That might be very helpful, yes. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. New business, Marina and Beach Parking Safety and Related Efforts.
This is really just a briefing, if there's any feedback, most welcome. When we saw the 320,000 cubic yards of sand landing on Tannock Beach, which was amazing, a group of us got together and thought, you know, we are going to have, hopefully, a really active season coming up this year with expanded beach capacity, more waterfront activities, just a lot of the boardwalk in full, in full swing, and we know that that whole area from the marina down to Tannock Beach is an active area every summer. So we set a working group together to take a look at the types of things we might do to address both future and existing, sort of, traffic management, parking capacity, all of the issues that come with a healthy maritime recreation area. And we've been working it for several months now, meeting routinely, and every time I ask, do you wanna quit, they all wanna keep meeting, so, which is a good sign. There's a very invested group of staff that are looking at this, includes the police department, fire department, public works, engineering, natural resources, Director of Operations for Community Services, Harbor Master, and the Town Collector, and you'll hear why in a moment, why Dave's involved in that. We've been looking really holistically at all the things that we can do to help manage issues there, and I'll just walk through some of them that we're considering, and I'll let you know which may likely come back to you, and if you have any resistance or concerns, we wanna know that now, so that we come back, we're prepared to respond. But this is probably one of three conversations we'll have in the next few months. So the first one is restoring a role that previously existed and expanding that to two departments, and that's allowing seasonal employees to be parking enforcement officers in town parking lots. And so, and right now, I think the Harbor Master has that authority, in the past, beach supervisors had it. We would like to recommend that, I think it's a total of five staff members, three beach and two marina additional in the season, would be appointed by this board as parking enforcement officers, so we've added that to those job descriptions. When those positions are hired, you actually appoint the individuals as parking enforcement officers. It's not unusual, it's very common, it's been done in the past, and then they have the ability, if there's an issue in those slots, that they can take action, they don't need to call the police department, they can issue a violation at that time. So that's, that's one. Of course, it will not be an intensive regulatory program, we'll start with a courtesy program. Generally, when you do that, folks that are frequent abusers will take heed and not do that, not, not be repeat offenders. So that's the first one. The other is to use, and again, this, this one really started with the Commission on Disabilities, looking for more enforcement on non-compliance with accessible parking places, people parking that don't have placards in those spaces. And so we looked at our 3-1-1 tool, and I worked with the police department and our IT department, and the police department is in favor of using that tool, which would allow any member of the public that sees an enforcement issue to take a photograph, so long as you have a photograph of the vehicle, the license plate, and what clearly is the violation, it could be the parking sign, or the emblem on the parking meter, on the, on the parking spot, and it would go into the police department, and the police officer could issue a parking violation. We are not a heavy parking enforcement community. In some years, we issue less than 100 violations across the town, it's simply not part of what the police department does on, we don't have a parking department or division, but it does put that in, in folks' hands if we want to do that.
But it is one thing that you're likely to encounter, once you have really nice sandy beaches. So if that's kind of the impetus for this-
All of it is really-
Thinking along those lines, that's, so if you, if you woke up from an expensive bed and breakfast in Sandwich, and got in your car and tooled your way down Freeman Avenue and went to the Sandwich Beach, then what do you do? You can, you can, you can pay cash to be at the beach all day-
The parking enforcement is just for violations.
Right.
It's for parking violations, like, parked illegally.
Yeah, but I'm just, but are we staffed all day, so that-
So, I think I'll get to some of those answers and some of the other items, and then I think I'm gonna get to that.
I'll hold off.
So that's really just, this is sort of enforcement, improving the eyes and ears out there, how do we make sure that people know that they're not parked in a legal spot, that that sort of casual impact on the public roadway can be addressed without having to call the police department, who really doesn't have the hands to respond as frequently as they would like to or need to. So that's just a tool that would be available, both to staff and people in the community. The others are, just to update, if you take a tour around, a lot of the enforcement signs are really faded, they're not visible, just replace them and, as a proper enforcement tool. Right now, there isn't a clear sign at First Beach that designates it as a beach parking area. We have an attendant, we have a commercial use next door, there's a lot of assumption that it's for commercial purposes. It is a shared use lot, but from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM during the beach season, it is a beach parking lot, we charge a fee for that, you can use your resident sticker or buy, buy the sticker, but, you know, we wanted folks coming in to know that it is a beach parking lot first. We won't prevent people from paying the $20, but it really is a beach parking lot. So, and that's a very small thing, just a sign that says it's a beach parking lot, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at First Beach. No one will be prevented from using the lot, but it just reduces expectations from folks using the commercial lot, that it's a free lot, it's not during those hours. And it's a, it's been a bit of a challenge for the parking staff at the lot, sometimes not treated with as much cordiality as you might like. The next one, Gallo Road, we've taken a good look at, and there'll be a recommendation that there's, as the commercial activity in the area expands, there's a lot more informal parking, the police department is very concerned about parking on both sides of the street, it really constrains the lane. Both public safety departments recommend that we adopt no parking on the east side of Gallo Road, but that we enhance and formalize what's happening on the left side. If you've been down there, we've done some clearing, marking that out, there's actually a little, a small, you know, four or five-car lot at the top of that, we're going to do a little bit more work on that and formalize that. So there's about 30 spaces, I think, in that area that are currently informally used, that we'll formalize those as parking spaces. There'll be no fees, there'll be free, free parking spaces on street, but that was one area. There's an area to the north of the Gallo Road on-street parking that we've looked at to expand, that initial look looked like we could do 30 to 50 cars, we're looking now, maybe 25. It doesn't look as promising as we first hoped to create additional parking in that area, the soils are challenging, there's some wet spots. We are going to continue to look at that, but it's not something we think we'll see for the season, but staff, all the team has been really dedicated to this, and really looking where we can make some improvements. So this is just this year, we'll come back, hopefully have more to report next year on all of this. So that's the Gallo Road area, so you will, you will, you'll see us come back. So the first one you'll see us come back on are the appointments for parking control, seasonal parking control, the second will be no parking, which does require a process for the board to identify, mark that as no parking. And then there's a couple of more items. We're looking at a trial for a license plate reader, the same company that does the license plate reader at the transfer station has actually given us a free camera that we could use this summer, if we'd like to pilot that. The marina staff would really like us to pilot that at the marina lot, and that would require us coming back and identifying a fee, we think that would be a fairly nominal fee. The interest here isn't to generate revenue, it's to really see if that tool would work in some of our other lots, the parking meter that we have at First Beach. It turns on every year, but at some point, you know, it's, it's, will need to be replaced, and it's not inexpensive to do. The license plate reader is a much lower-cost investment, and they like it at the transfer station, so we wanna test it at that lot, and this is one I really am curious about your feedback on, because it will require a fee hearing. So I just, it's one that we like the concept of, but if you're not comfortable with the idea of charging a fee at that lot, you know, we'd wanna know that, but we'll come back. This is really just for you to start thinking about it.
It works so well at the transfer station, it-
It's a great tool, if you have, if you're, have, if you decide you wanna allow, which I think I'd recommend, beach stickers are authorized for free, you'd be in the inventory if your license plate is identified as having a beach sticker, then, you know, you're good to go, because it really is just a very simple application, software application.
Thank you.
One of the issues that's come up is really balancing the needs of the private restaurants, providing public parking, but also balancing the interest in the marina area for patrons of the marina, making sure that they and their guests have parking, they have, many of them have parking passes, that we're recommending that the shuttle that's been in, in the marina lot not be allowed to sort of secure its own parking space for the shuttle, and identify sort of spaces that will be allocated to the shuttle. It just didn't, it felt like we were providing an exclusive use for an independent commercial entity, and there were some conflicts with the travel routes that were used. That shuttle still can pick up on the street, we still advocate for it, we think it's a great resource, but having an exclusive spot in a public lot, it, it didn't work as well as we'd like it to have gone. So we're recommending that that not be in place this summer, and that's been reviewed, of course, with the marina staff. What else do we have? A few more. Freeman Avenue, in fact, today, the town engineer and guy from the Community Services Department met with operators of the brewery there, you know, we would like them to take a look at some of the onsite parking that they have, particularly on the face of the building at Freeman Avenue. Those vehicles make the visibility very difficult when you're pulling out, either to make a right or a left-hand turn, so they're, working with them to make sure that they really evaluate where the public road layout and the private property ends, and if we find that that really is a safety issue, we could ask them to, you know, remove some of those spaces. We'd like them to take a look at that, and they are doing that. The other is, with the improvements to the, what used to be a parking lot and now is a beer garden, they took away their access for deliveries, and they're accepting deliveries on the street side, they have relocated some of their equipment and their food trucks. My understanding is they will be able to accommodate deliveries on their own property this season, so those are a couple of nice improvements that they'll be making.
That's an improvement, and if it's, there is a visibility issue down there, absolutely, positively.
So those are two that they met onsite to discuss today. And then, you know, the future possibilities are to expand the license plate reader to other sites, the Department of Natural Resources, the Beach Department like the idea of it, especially for the ponds, where they don't have as frequent access, but that kind of a program, if we had it in a vehicle, you know, would really help sort of monitor those areas, so that would be nice. sort of monitor those areas. So that would be nice utilization moving forward if it works out.
See how it works, right.
And then lastly, there are several issues that have come up that we're not recommending right now, but are, are items that we could discuss again in the future. The first is we had five-plus residents come in and speak with us earlier this year looking for a permit parking only for a small area of the Town Neck area. The police department and any of us that have been involved in permit parking, it's more complicated than you'd think. There are always winners and losers, and it often pushes impacts in other areas. We think we'd like to try the things we're working on now, you know, keep that in mind for the future. But for the season, we're recommending that we hold on that, on that item. We've also heard requests for, you know, beach parking only in designated areas on the streets in the Town Neck area. Again, we think that would simply push the same problem to other areas. And so we want to see if what we're doing this year has any measured benefit. We've talked about expanding no parking areas in the same area. The fire chief and the police chief are both comfortable with the operations as they are. They do monitor them. If they see that there's a significant public safety issue, they will be the first two, I can assure you, that will ask for that if they think it's needed for public safety. Right now, they feel that they can accommodate the community and respond appropriately. Two more. We've been asked and contemplated expanding the hours of the fee parking at First Beach because there's so much activity there. There's a revenue generator. There's cost to supporting all this management. But I was really compelled by Trish McDonald, who's our, our recreation director, that that is our only accessible oceanfront beach. And there are people that are both residents with stickers and those that don't have stickers that rely on that beach for accessibility. And she really just doesn't feel comfortable expanding the fee and doesn't recommend it and feels like she would hear a lot about changing the way we use that beach. So I think, again, let's see how the season goes and, and see what, what's, how we do in the next season.
It's one of the few places where you can actually drive up and actually see the water.
And that you can get out and assess it.
And just a little historical footnote, that it was after a real bad northeast storm in the late 60s that the Select Board had a wa, a wall put across to keep the sand and stone from being washed into the parking lot. But they overlooked the fact that it was so tall that you couldn't see the water. And people complained about it. And the following May, at an annual town meeting, $27,000 was appropriated to raise the parking lot so that you could actually see the water from the cars. So that's how important that was, that it was actually a town meeting action. I think it was a women's club that saved it.
That's a lot of money, too.
At that time, it was quite a project. And it's, it stood the test of time because that is.
It's still there.
Still there.
And the last one is, we've been approached in the past about allowing a private commercial operator to operate the First Beach parking lot for both beach parking and then after-hours and, you know, pre- and postseason operations. Again, the staff aren't comfortable with that at this point. At some point, we may want to consider that. But for now, we feel like we're making some really minor adjustments and would like to see how those benefit in the coming season. So I didn't plan to say so much, but apparently I had a lot on my sheet.
The point right before that, please, are we talking about, could the proposal be to expand the hours or to increase the fee? What was the thought on that?
The thought was to expand the duration from maybe starting the meter earlier in the year, holding it open later in the year, and increasing the hours later in the day. We don't want to create more of a problem, though. It's always, it's like, it's like a sponge, right? You squeeze it and it comes out the other end. So we've really been mindful of not trying to do things that create more pressure.
Thank you. I just wanted to make certain that I understood the proposal. I, I get it. Thank you. All right.
But we'll continue meeting. We'll come back with the recommendations, which will be, really to the board, will only be three things we come back to you on. Happy to hear your input in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
So something to look into in the future would be if you wanted to have it, if you wanted to post the lot so that it required a sticker for a longer period of time, but you didn't have an attendant. People in Brewster can come to the beach, and they know it's a stickered parking lot. And when they get out of their car, we had signs there that allowed them to go online and go right downtown and pay their one-day pass to be at the beach. And that way, when our attendants came by and scanned their license plate, they knew that these people had already paid their daily fee.
If we go to the license plate reader at some point in the future, all of it can be done from your phone. You don't need to go visit anywhere.
And it will strengthen your, your attendance as well because I'm a father of a daughter who did it two years. And the other thing is, your, your, your charge is divided up into two things. A whole bunch of small lots and Freeman Avenue. So how you manage your whole bunch of small lots is really different than how you manage Freeman Avenue. So, but yet Freeman Avenue is a money generator. That, that lot, and anything we can do to enhance that, we should. So that's why I say the, the main thing is that the, the time has to mean something. And you got to be there every day, even if it's wet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Potential intended use plan cap and impact on future wastewater projects.
So I'll do my best to explain that. It's really complex. In your packets, before tonight, was a draft letter from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, which the towns designate to. And then there was also a copy of a letter that the Association to Preserve Cape Cod had already sent to the state. And I'm using the APC's own words, "They fully understand that they can throw haymakers more than towns can." And so when we talked about what sort of letter should go to the state in terms of comments, because the public comment period on the draft IUP expires as on Monday. So if you guys say, send this, I will send it tomorrow. And so what I did as I, you know, from what I learned at our executive committee meeting on Monday, some follow-up with people who admittedly know a lot more about what the likely repercussions were from the draft comments on the IUP. And once I had a full draft, I ran it by Ed Leonard, and he gave me like two or three really good sentences to add, which I did. So the draft that I handed out in front of your chair is slightly updated from what was in your packet on Tuesday. I think it's worth sending. I think it gets the main points across. And I think one of the positive things in it is, I know the Cape towns want to work with the state in trying to figure out a solution to this. We're not trying to just, you know, kick and scream all the time because, you know, we've all, we haven't yet, but most of the other towns have really benefited from this to the tune of a lot of money for a long period. So a lot of it's worked. One of the interesting comments or discussions that we had on Monday at our meeting is if you think it through, when it says a cap of a project of 50 million, for a town like us, I don't think we could physically spend 50 million in a year. Even like, think of when we built the public safety buildings or the Cal or the library renovations. Those weren't even close to that, and they took two years, not one year. Granted, prices will be going up, but you have to remember, when they say, when the state says cap the IUP at 50 million, all they are concerned about is that 2.4% loan assistance, not the principal.
Horizontal construction.
Yeah.
So much faster than vertical.
Yeah, that's true.
You take the cost of the biggest main we're going to put in the ground and then pound a mile of it in. You'd be surprised how many millions of dollars that is. And it would take a week.
Yeah, that's true.
So horizontal construction is a whole different animal.
And they also say.
Yarmouth and, they would have real good numbers, though.
Yeah. So that'll be interesting because they just got the permission to apply. So, yeah. So that was the other.
You just mentioned, if you have multiple contractors.
Yeah.
Which you would.
Yeah.
Because you need to tie, you need to tie this in.
And the other point is, for those of us who are just instituting our phase-one plans, as Heather was just saying, you, you know, you're not doing just the conveyance system. You're building the plant and the disposal. So that's a lot, you know, that was one of the thoughts that came up at the meeting today. Is there a way to sort of exempt or give a higher threshold for phase-one communities because they're having to do a lot more than people that are just expanding to a new area? And I think there's ways around it. So the, the other point I wanted to make is where we really save money with the SRF isn't even the low-interest loans. It's that makes us eligible for the 25% principal forgiveness through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. One of the thoughts that Ed had, and you see it in the one in front of you, is almost like, could, could the Clean Water Trust look at the applications, limit the expenses to 50 million, but say, your full project for 200 million qualifies, and you'll go on future IUPs, but you're not on this one? Would that then enable the Cape and Islands Fund to reimburse you the 25% on the bigger amount that you'd borrow? So I mean, all that's to be determined later, so I added that to the letter. I don't know. I feel like it's as balanced as it could be, and we should send it in even though we're not on the IUP because it, you know, it's a team effort.
What, I would say, what's the, what's the downside to sending the letter? I don't think there is any.
There isn't. We don't, we're not even on the list. We can say what we want.
No, I think the, by the time, you know, we may luck out because by the time this wrinkle irons out, it'll be about the time we're ready to put a shovel in the ground.
I think we're going to benefit from a lot of things where we're not as pressured to do stuff immediately. But we're also pent up, and we want to do something because we know it's an issue and we know we have a responsibility. One of the things that you'll hear Dave talk about is we're looking at a couple of things in Barnstable and in Mashpee that it might be on those nitrogen trading credits, i.e., it'd be cheaper for us to help fund a project in your town than us to build something because by the time we build it and it actually impacts where the problem is, you know, it's 20 years before it gets there. So there's some things that we're talking about with Mashpee and Barnstable that at someday, we may decide, okay, I'm making this up. Here's $10 million for this project. Our responsibility just went from 23% down to 17% in your town, something like that. So.
Need a motion for this?
I think it'd be good just to say the board unanimously voted. Yeah, which it says already.
Make a motion that we send, it's both letters, correct?
Just this one.
Just one.
Yeah, this is the one. Yep.
Make a motion that we send the letter as presented for the wastewater, ongoing wastewater efforts.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman? I have none. Anybody here for public comment? Okay. Closing remarks. Please maintain the conditions in Eastern Europe, the Middle East, the overall threats to world peace, as well as those affected by natural emergencies, in our thoughts and prayers. Motion to.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 3-0. We'll be meeting on Thursday, March 6th, here in Historic Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Enjoy a safe evening, everyone.